The meeting of the Planning Commission in North St. Paul on April the third, 2025. And as I understand it, our city council liaison will do roll call.
For roll call, Commissioner Jim Rothie?
Here.
Commissioner Cameron Munich?
Here.
Commissioner Elizabeth Gabboi?
Here.
Commissioner Stephanie Kane Burbach?
Here.
And Commissioner Arthur Alvarez?
Here.
Vice Chair Andrew Weiss?
Here.
And Chair Patrick Please.
Here.
Also here is City Council Liaison Jason Nordby. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. We could probably do that ourselves, but you know, the patterns of behavior, it's just a real shakeup to not have the staff member here, so.
We're glad you're here.
All right, we have a fairly short agenda tonight. Could lead to some discussion of note. Does anyone have anything? If there's nothing to change on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
From Commissioner Weiss, second?
I'll go second.
Second from Commissioner Rothie, all in favor say aye. Aye. And then we have meeting minutes from January the second. It's been a couple of months.
Crazy, that's so long ago.
Yeah, I can't remember what we did on January second. No, I did, I actually read it, but. If there are. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Rothie, a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Alvarez, any discussion on it? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. We have unanimous on the meeting minutes. Meeting is open to the public now. For items not on the agenda, if there's anyone here that wants to speak to that. No. And we do not have public hearings tonight. So. We're doing commission business. Commission business being review of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. As I understand it, it is intended that we make a recommendation to the city council with regard to adoption of the Park and Open Space Master Plan. Is it Parks? It's Parks plural, sorry. Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Do we have a representative from the Parks and Recreation Commission that could maybe highlight some points? Because I know the commission had some things to say, obviously putting this together. Is there anybody here to have, not to put anybody on the spot?
We were, I mean, we can, but we're just here to answer any questions that you may not have.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to discuss what you've read or if you had clarification.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. We didn't talk about it in advance, so. I don't know that I saw anything that was particularly in question for me.
No, I mean, this, I want to commend you guys. This is a really, really, really great report. Super helpful, covers everything that I would have wanted to see. Very clearly described. Really, really good job, and I appreciate that. It helps everybody when all the information is there and easy to, easy to get into. Yeah, I mean, I, it looks good to me. I don't really have anything that I would add to it, or I think it, it's very thorough. It's really a great report. I don't have anything to add.
I do have a couple of questions. One, one is with regard to Silver Lake Park, there's mention of community interest in having lifeguards present. Is that, is that just a cost decision the city needs to make primarily, I assume?
Yeah, that, so that isn't, my name's Laura, by the way.
Hi Laura.
And this is Dave.
I do.
Parks Commission. That's something that the community wants, but it's not necessarily something that we address specifically in this report as like a high level priority. Historically, we've had to have fundraised to have lifeguards at the beach. And one of our commissioners did that with the Silver Lake Splash for a very long time, but it was a very big undertaking. And so it just kind of fell to the wayside at COVID and hasn't really come back, but it's definitely a piece of feedback that we've heard and are considering as we move forward.
Okay.
And that used to be paid through from the city and when they had cut that, that's when this flash kind of took over and started doing fundraisers.
Okay.
We would like to see that eventually revert back to the city itself, some kind of budget somewhere.
Do you have any idea like what, what's the amount that it would take to cover a summer?
That's a good question. Definitely something we can come back to and probably something we should look into as well, so we have that number as we're making those decisions.
Could probably do some interpretation, interpolation, I guess is the right word, from previous, when it was being paid for.
Yeah.
And then inflation and such to try and figure out what that is.
Yeah, we definitely.
In some manner or another, I expect the council would benefit from that.
Absolutely.
The other thing, I, I would commend you for, for the work done on, especially on McKnight Fields. We, I was in attendance at one of the community meetings where the, where some of the park and open spaces were talked about and that one and some of the smaller ones as well. There's an awful lot of options to try and sort through, and I think that this report puts, clarifies some of that and, and at least establishes some goals for things to do, so I, my commendation for that.
Well, and we have to shout out HGA, who's the firm that we hired to do all of this. We went through a whole process of interviewing a bunch of different options and they just continue to stand out for the, all of the reasons that you're talking about, their level of detail, the creation of a report that's easy for everyone to read, not just engineers to read. And they're specializing in community engagement and in meaningful conversations so that all people in North St. Paul have a voice in what that park is going to look like. So that's why we chose them. They absolutely delivered. And we're super impressed and grateful to them as well.
That's good.
I do have a question from a personal standpoint.
Yeah.
And first of all, I never am sure, is it House or Howsey Park?
Howsey.
Howsey, okay. I see that the Ball Diamond is going away. Does that mean that we will never get ice skating there again as well, or is that already off the table? Because I know that there haven't had an ice rink there in a couple of years.
So I was the one who created Fire and Ice that runs at Howsey Park, which was one of the reasons we got the rink back there, so we could have like a small neighborhood festival. That, the only reason that didn't happen at Howsey this year is because there was some change in staffing that happened at the city level. And as the new person came in and started planning events, that, the fact that it was at Howsey previously wasn't known. So I don't think that the answer is we will never have ice there. We just didn't have it there this year.
Last year it was too warm.
Yeah.
You couldn't do it if you wanted.
Every time I planned it, it would be, we would have snow, it'd be freezing, and then it was like forty-five that day.
Right, right.
And so we were just like, okay.
Oh yeah, no, there's, there's no accounting for the weather.
No. Yeah.
And I can speak a little bit to that as well, just because we did get some public comments about the park that I've discussed with the city manager. There were some residents that were disappointed that there was not ice. We did not get those in time, but my understanding is there is intent to have the rink there. I don't know about any of the events, but at least a rink there next year.
Yeah, because I saw that there's supposed to put an ADA trail, and I guess it's going to go through the area of the diamond or something like, or either that or else they couldn't make the diamond ADA accessible, some. It didn't exactly explain why, it just said that that was the reason it was going away because of the ADA requirement, though.
Yep.
The, the only other thing I would say is will you run, will you read through one more time and just make sure things are up to date? And I didn't notice much, but for example, there is one point where it says that the construction of the new apartment building where the Lily, Lily newspapers used to be is ongoing. And so, you know, just.
Well, it wasn't that in, that was in the design manual.
No, that's also, it's also under Housing Development Trends on page fifteen of the Parks and Open Space.
I think that's coming from, like, we've been working on this for a long time.
Oh, I know, I know.
So I think that's just the, when we started, that's where it was. And I think they want to maintain the integrity of the journey that we took to get there, but I can definitely share that with them.
Well, and like I say, I just wanted to mention that I, I have to write these things too sometimes, so I know that no matter how diligent you are, and things change over time anyway, so I just mentioned it.
Definitely.
But it's not to me, it's not a deal killer if it stays in there. It's an excellent, you know, I was very impressed, and honestly, I didn't realize we had as many parks as we do. You know, there were, there were five or six of them that I, I think I've driven by and never realized there were parks.
Is there anything that the two of you would say really stands out? That, that you would look at our, our current, either current parks or future parks, anything that really stands out in your own mind, having been involved in, in the planning that you would say, oh, this, this is like my number one.
Like, we're excited about.
Like my number one thing, that kind of a deal, is there anything like that?
I can go and then you can go. Yeah, I think McKnight Fields, bringing it back to life, specifically those tennis courts, we've been talking about it. We've been talking about McKnight Tennis Courts since I joined the commission, like, I don't know, seven, eight years ago. They're in complete disrepair and they're pretty visible from the street too, and it's not super appealing. So I'm really excited that that's something that is going to be redone and that HGA and the community thought creatively about how we can put flex fields in there so that multiple sports can use it.
Yeah.
And highlighting the fact that we didn't have as many soccer fields as we thought we did. So how can we put in the flex fields that allow for soccer or footsall or, you know, other small games in that space and make it like an inclusive sporting center?
Yeah, that's very good.
Yeah, if you're gonna do, if you are gonna do soccer, I'd also encourage that you have the facility for rugby there as well, because there's a big lack of rugby pitches in this area, and if they can accommodate soccer, they can usually do rugby.
I'm an All-American women's rugby player, so.
You're all about that.
With the flex fields, we'll be able to do some of that. One of the things we are trying to also incorporate at McKnight Fields is also a place for skateboarding and the BMXs. Which, you know, ten years ago, I would have said, eh, not, not now, but now today, and seeing what some of the stuff that's happening, yeah, I'm all for it. I think the kids need a place to be able to burn off some of that extra energy. And if you look at some of our plans from HGA, there, there's other stuff for the kids that are in, you know, the thirteen to eighteen year age. Place for them to go and do stuff too, so. McKnight right now is one of our most excited ones. The one that's on Third Street or Pleasant, or we just, oh, they're really, and we kind of pick a name for that.
I don't even know which one you're talking about. The one, the natural play one, or the town, the like corner downtown?
No, the other one.
The natural play?
The natural play area. That I think is really necessary, and that one moving forward with all the new developments and stuff would be a huge asset. It's just a big, huge wood of lot now. So I think in, in the future, that would be kind of like a nice entryway to, to North St. Paul.
Yeah, for sure. I love the, the downtown triangle or whatever you'd want to call it too. That's, it's small, but it's such an important moment, driving into town and whether you're coming from the Gateway Trail or from, you know, the south, so, yeah, it's, that's.
They were calling that one the front porch park, because it is, it's kind of like that feel, and so that's kind of the feel they were going for.
Yeah. I love it.
One thing I wanted to bring up is Southwood Preserve, and they bring up the fact that it's often used as an educational site. It is not accessible. And if that is something that, I realize money-wise, it's probably not feasible in the near future, but is it something that's in the plans? Oakdale Park is beautifully done and the asphalt is put in nicely. I don't, I, I think it would be nice to make that accessible.
Southwood Nature Reserve is set up that way to have more of the wood chips and stuff. It's easier on dogs and everything. And he wanted to keep that as close to being natural as possible.
Oh, I understand that, but it's also not an accessible space, and it is used as an educational space, so.
There's high level answer to that very, very in-depth question is historically, Southwood Nature Center was predominantly managed by a task force of volunteer. And it, it, they are still there, but they are not nearly as active. And so over the past couple of months, we've worked with the city and the task force and the commission to say that really the city is going to maintain that park and the volunteers can submit like possible projects that they want to do. So the future of Southwood is absolutely something that we're talking about. It's a very emotional and delicate conversation, but it's not feedback that we haven't heard before, so. It's definitely something that we're aware of, and going forward with any new park development, we're required to make it ADA accessible. And that's at, you know, one of the top bullets that we're considering in every piece.
All right, great, thanks. I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you.
I realize it's not feasible at the moment.
Yep, I definitely appreciate the feedback, yep.
Well, and it's, it's always a bit of a challenge to figure out that mix between the natural and the, and the accessible, because it doesn't blend well sometimes.
No, but we do have an opportunity to kind of like play and explore with that natural play area that we're creating right now. Because we are taking a completely natural area and turning it into all accessible community. Like, there's going to be a community garden, there's trails throughout, there's, you know, you can climb on logs, so.
It's a good place to.
So that's kind of our, like, we're learning, right? And then we can take that learning and bring it forward.
Great.
Let me just put in a word of caution, though, for somebody that's working for the state right now, and we're getting a lot of feedback from the federal government. You might kind of want to soft pedal the accessibility statements right now, because that's one of the, one of the things that they are going through reviewing and turning things down. Because they talk about develop, you know, accessibility. So, much as I hate to say it.
It's true.
You know.
Yeah, and we also are mandated to, like, any new park stuff that we.
Right.
Is required to be ADA.
Of course.
We're going to follow that guidance until we need to have a, like, a higher level conversation with the federal government, but as a Parks Commission, ADA is our priority as we move forward. But, yeah.
Also, great work on this.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a beautiful packet.
Yeah.
No, as long as we in the city are paying attention to it, when new, new opportunities come up, that's the, that's one of the important things, is, don't forget it's here.
Please don't, we've literally been working on it for.
But, but I, I think in general, the Parks and Rec Commission has done a really good job of being active and and really putting forth some, putting forth ideas and not letting them drop. And I think that's really important, and I appreciate that.
The updating of the parks is very visible and
It is.
appreciated, and as someone who has scars from the old playground equipment at Howsey. Like, it's, it's, it's very nicely done.
Awesome.
It's been nice to see the new signs too.
Yes.
Yeah.
And as always, we're always open to feedback around the parks, even if it's like we found graffiti under this slide, like, send us an email when you see it, send us a picture. We'll get public, Public Works out there to take care of it, so, always open to that.
I will admit, I was curious as I was reading through this, do you get a lot of requests from older residents to replace the, what was it, the triple screw slide that used to be on down?
I have scars from that one too.
No, but we do have a nice commemorative sign out there highlighting the history and.
I didn't, I didn't think they'd bring back the steel slide. I thought maybe they might put something into, you know, modern materials.
Got taken down after that car hit it, yeah, it is. For three years, it was, we want, so, you know. Time will heal a lot of things. Not all, but.
You know, I would really recommend that we make it a habit of giving new commissioners and new city council people copies of both of these items, so that they're aware of them and they have them to refer to in the future.
That's a good idea.
Very good point.
Jason, you should note that down for the notes.
There you go. Something you can report back.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of make yourself useful here, right?
All right, is there any other questions that we can answer?
I have one, a, and I need to lean on your expertise, as I'm still a fairly new council member. In in the scope of the Planning Commission recommending this to the city council, typically, is there any history of how granular or in the weeds the Planning Commission would review something like this? One of the questions that was brought up when it was presented to the city council in the master plan, the new nice park space that was going to be a triangle. One of the questions that was brought up, or somewhat talked about was what is the parking requirements for a park, and did that park meet what the current parking requirements are for a park? Not having a ton of experience, I didn't know if questions like that would be answered in a setting of this nature? Or is this just a general overview?
Good questions. My assumption would be that HGA considered that. They're extremely thorough and they anytime we hit like a snag or anything, they brought it back to the team and were like, hey, how do you want to troubleshoot this? What should we do? I don't specifically remember a parking conversation around the parks. Definitely something we can ask of them. And then to answer your other question, I think it's my understanding that this is an opportunity for you all to see it, and we ask, ask any questions, and if you had any, like, really intense concerns that you were like, I don't think I can, like, move forward, that you would share that with us. But overall, it would be the request that you all are in support of the plan that we're doing. And then we could have the questions that you have come, like, come to us and then back to you. So that is kind of convoluted, but.
No, it makes sense. I just, I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know if this was going to be a three-meeting-long conversation where we're reviewing every park to see if it meets every all the city codes and, and everything within the city, or if this was just a general overview, and I appreciate your, you know, helping me learn. I just didn't know what to expect.
Yeah, just general overview, probably as council, you're applying, you're applying a lot more scrutiny to these documents. Here in this capacity, it's, we are in support of this.
Yeah, that's my understanding too.
I mean, I was actually amazed to see the demographic information as a part of the, the parks meeting. I didn't expect that, but it's kind of intriguing as I start looking at it, I'm like.
This gets presented to the city council, you guys will have to sit down and kind of go, yes, we agree with this, or we disagree with this. We're just asking for their endorsement.
Right, and.
We can move forward with it, so we can kind of say, yeah, we've presented it, it's okay. So we know that that's our guideline to continue going forward, you know, so there's not any changes. Over a year ago, it was asked of us to look at McKnight Fields, the one downtown, the little triangle next to the VFW, and the one on Third Street. They asked us to look at that and come up with something, and that's when we put out some bids to different companies. And HGA is the one that we liked the best. And we worked with them for just over a year now, then. So I think between the Park Commission So I think between the Park Commission and our contractor, I think we've done a nice layout. But it's still up to the city council. They may say, no, we're going to put a parking lot there.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I, I, the work you did is awesome. The, the HGA, and I can't thank you enough. This is just wonderful. I just didn't know what to expect. When Taco Bell or Dunkin' Donuts was brought before this commission, there was a conversation about moving a sidewalk one foot because they were worried about line of sight coming around a corner. So I didn't know the, the level of discussion this was going to be. So I just was looking for education.
I think if anyone saw anything that was blatantly not in line with.
Yeah.
You know. We would, we would address that. Yeah.
I guess the one question that does jump out is how do you guys plan to use this information? I mean, what's your purpose? It's, it's well put together. There's no question about it and thankfully for doing so. But long-term, how do you plan to use the information that you have together? What's, what's the purposes?
We're going to do all the things. We're going to do, like, we're going to move for, we're going to move forward with the building of the three parks, but we can't do that all at once because we don't have the funds to do that. So what we're going to do is choose a place to start, choose a park more than likely to start with, and then move forward on that. And then also use those as oper, as a learning curve of how we're going to implement the other two parks. Does that answer what you're asking?
And part of, we have like 10-year plans and saw five and 10-year plans. So for instance, if there's a shelter at Casey Lake that we know that's going to have to be replaced, that's part of our improvement plans to continue to move forward with those things. Certain playground equipments will have to be upgraded and changed out. Playground equipment is good for about 10 years. Then the plastic starts to get brittle and stuff like that. So moving forward, we're trying to find its stuff that we can interchange from one site to the other rather than each one being unique. The playground equipment itself is extremely expensive. But as we move forward, we want to kind of start getting things a little more uniformed. So that's why we have this plan. So it's to inform the public of what we have here in the city and kind of where we plan on going. We may fall short on a couple of things, but some stuff I'm sure we're going to shine, as we have for several years. Like that, when we worked on Casey Lake's building, you know, that was.
Is that, that park shelter, that park building and the, and the large playground there were kind of done about the same time?
About the same time.
That, what was that, eight years ago? Nine years ago? Nine, eight, nine years ago, something like that?
It's closer to nine, believe it or not.
And that, and that park, it's used heavily.
A half years and now I'm back on. So yeah, because when we, it was, the playground kind of happened just before because we used the old Booyah Building.
Yeah.
Store all the tools because that was a complete community build, which I think I loved it. Most people that were in the neighborhood loved it. Then we started the new building because one of my last things as a commission at that time was building Casey Lake. Remember you and I worked on some of that stuff together quite a bit.
Yeah. And that, and that park, that playground is just, there's people there all the time. Except the heavy deepest part of winter, you don't see people there, but other than that, there's always someone.
This plan is to, to inform the public of what we have and gives us guidelines where we need to be.
I think to back the question up just a little bit though, to answer your question, and I learned this being on the Parks Committee, you make all the plans we want on the Parks Committee, then it comes here. This is what this is for today. And then it goes to city council. And then they ultimately decide. So they can make these great plans. And this is a good one, but then ultimately it's going to have to, to be okay. It's like, like, like you said, you know, they might decide to put a parking lot there, but that's the process. I think that, I think that might be the question you were asking.
There's this very clear and organized prioritization table.
Yep.
But I mean, whether that happens.
Yeah.
Right.
And in addition to that, I forgot to mention, we also have our park improvement plan. So they're paralleling each other, right? So the park improvement plan is what we've historically done, what we're doing right now and what we're going to do in the next five to seven years. This is happening parallel to that as we're improving everything else. So those are our two guiding documents as we move forward.
Thank you.
Very good. And Jason, as a city planner, usually the parks would be, on a city this size, you have two different levels of parks. You'd have the neighborhood park that are, usually don't have parking planned because they're meant to be accessed by people walking and bicycling. And then you'd have the few larger parks where you would need to have parking because you're having a larger catchment area. So.
Because if you think of Housy Park, there's no parking lot.
Except for, no, not a parking lot.
There's nothing there except beside the road. Yep. Because they're more in, in a community area. Yeah.
And I a hundred percent agree with you. I just, I know I'm not up to date on what parks were built when things weren't required and as new stuff, you know, is, is, are things have changed and.
Yeah.
Are things required now?
Yep.
The, most of the emails I have gotten about this meeting and when the, when it was before the city council too, all centered around ADA accessibility and things of that nature. And that was why I asked the one question to the HGA about what level of ADA planning was put in to that.
It's required that any new park builds and maintenance of parks consider making them ADA. And the only reason I say consider is like, we are making them ADA. It just takes a little bit longer as, to pour concrete and figure out exactly where it's going to go. It's expensive as you know. So.
One thing I'm curious about, and it was reading through the report. It mentioned that Housy was park number four from the original plan. I'm just curious, do we have anything that shows where the other three parks were? Because I think that's the only one that was originally laid out with the plat of the town that's, that's left.
The Tower Park, I think, was one of them.
Tower would be, I think Tower would be.
And Silver Lake was one.
Yeah. So what else would probably mean the three? We used to have the Cannon Park up here, but that's.
Yeah, that where Vets Park is.
Yeah. Well, it was kind of across before the.
It was, yeah, it was over in the neighborhood anyway, right in that same vicinity. Because Cannon got moved a couple of times.
Now Cannon's down in this.
Now it's over there, but it got moved even a couple of times while it was over in this neighborhood.
Like I said, I was just curious. So.
We'll get back to you on that.
Yeah.
I should know that. I should know the answer to that because I've been here long enough.
I don't think you date back to the 1888s.
No, that's true. Not the original plan. That's absolutely right.
Is there anything else that we can answer for you, for the parks?
I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you guys again.
So I don't know if we need to do a motion, but I think we should. We should do a motion. Formulating that motion. I'm not sure what it should be.
To accept or to.
Perhaps to recommend to council approval of the.
Like full acceptance or something?
Yeah, something along those lines.
In reading the recommended action.
Yeah.
Staff recommends.
That's what I was thinking.
Recommend approval to the city council of the Parks and Rec, of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
Master Plan. Yep.
Can you recommend it?
Need somebody to make that motion.
I will make the motion exactly what Jason just said.
The motion.
Now seconded exactly.
A motion made by Commissioner Rothie and seconded by Commissioner Muick. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are good. Thank you.
That's still a kudos plan, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, really good. Really, really good work.
Yeah, I've seen larger cities that did not have anything anywhere near as clear and well-spelled out.
Very well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
The next item on the agenda has to do with discussion of the Downtown Design Manual. This, in my conversations with the city manager, this is anticipated to be a multi-meeting sort of discussion. Not a, we have to do anything with it necessarily tonight. I think the most notable thing that he brought to my attention, and he kind of raised a question. Do we need it? Does the zoning ordinance adequately cover what we care about in the downtown area? And I think that's a really good question. So I've been noodling on that myself and I think what the design, the Downtown Design Manual does that the ordinance does not is it brings various guidelines, subjectivity, recommendations, aesthetics. It brings other things in that the ordinance does not, in my opinion.
That can't probably.
And really can't. Right. It's really not, the ordinance is not designed to do that. It's designed to, you know, establish setbacks and things like that. And I think as I look at the design manual, which I don't have right in front of me, but the, I think that's what's of value to it. Yeah, I saw you had it there. So I just didn't.
I'll pass it.
I didn't have time to, didn't have time to do that today. But that, that's the, the one thing that kind of stands out in my mind. I'm curious what you guys feel about that.
I would agree with that. I feel like it's a pictorial representation of what the zoning ordinances are saying. And it gives people a way of imagining how something could fit within those zoning ordinances. So I definitely think it's, it's worth pursuing, worth doing.
I think it's, it's really, it's a piece of the design and historical review board. I think that they don't exist anymore. But I think it's good that it's not, it's not, there's no requirements in it. It's just suggestions and some of the suggestions I think maybe are a little bit dated now. But I think it's worth having, maybe in a slightly different pared-down form. Because I think it was trying to do something a little bit different when it was created than what it would need to do now. But I think it's great to have imagery showing what we would hope, you know, developers would come in and, and show us. So I think it's, it's worthwhile to keep. I think it maybe just has to transform a little bit. But it's, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of cities used to have things like this where it was requirements. You know, you had to use these three materials or this percentage of this material and.
Form-based code.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And those are, I think, a lot of cities are moving away from that. But for a town like ours where we really are, and, and this is specifically speaking to downtown, right? It's not a overarching thing. So, and our downtown is so unique and such a huge part of town that I think it's good to have some form of suggestive imagery to go along with it.
I think that's, I think that's wise.
So does that mean we come back next time with maybe some recommendations then? As far as any changes or additions or deletions we'd like to see or what would be our next step?
I, I think it would be good if, if we would have an opportunity to review it in greater detail. And yeah, and maybe bring suggestions to the next meeting. I think that would be worthwhile.
So Andrew, you feel like it could be updated to maybe reflect more of the current needs that we have? So maybe those are things we could bring.
Yep. And I think there's a lot in here that we could probably take out.
Sure.
But yeah, I think, I mean, it, it's really basically, it's, it's like a, a book you would read in, you know, urban pla, in an urban planning class. I mean, it's, it's not anything magic. It's, it's the typical things that make sense for any sort of urban downtown space. But it's good to have, especially when there's, you know, specific examples that relate to, to our downtown. But our downtown has changed a lot since.
It has, yeah. Well, it's interesting to look at things like on page 12, well, I guess it would be 12 and 13, where they're talking about downtown as a place.
Yep.
Yep, yeah.
And to think of how the downtown has developed since this document was created and how different it is.
Yeah.
From that time. I think that, those are the things that I think we need to recognize and decide, okay, well, let's do this with it. Based on what is happening now.
Yeah.
Max Darnett. I had, I'd never actually seen a picture of Max Darnett before.
The original one. Yeah. Yeah.
Commissioner Police, would you be okay if I all recommend a possible third alternative to that have been discussed?
Of course.
Um, one of the things I would possibly suggest is to take a gander at the, the official name, the North St. Paul Comprehensive Plan 2040. I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying that the, the downtown master plan needs to be kept. One of the third or a possible alternate solution might be to condense it and have it be a chapter or a section in the comprehensive plan rather than its own separate document.
What's the status of the comp plan now?
It's, it's online. You, you can all look at it.
But when was it? I can't remember when it was last redone.
About 2018, give or take a year.
Do you remember?
Not off the top of my head.
Because I remember, I remember reviewing it as part of my work with Mindot. I've only been there since 2016. So.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's either 2018 or 2019.
But do a, do a comparative, not an analysis so much, but, but at least some form of evaluation between.
Does it need to live by itself or could it live within that document?
And actually on the regular timeline, you guys are probably going to have to start updating it again within the next year, the two years anyway.
I believe year and a half, two years is what we were told.
So it would be, yeah.
The, no, the 2020, the 2040.
2040 comp plan.
And the 2040 comp plan refers to the Downtown Design Manual in it.
But it would be, it would be good to make that decision and then.
And then when you.
Agreed.
Then they'll become part of the 2050 comp plan.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. It's always, it's always good to have.
Agreement.
Information in one place.
Right.
You don't have to look in multiple documents and, yeah.
And where, where this came up a little bit was the, the proposed plan across the street here, they were looking at putting in a commercial venture of some sort. And the 20, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan didn't necessarily agree with the Downtown Design Manual. So there was a little bit of a circular reference.
Not, not a big surprise there. That's real easy to do. That, that was one of my concerns is that, is there information in here that conflicts with our ordinance in some form or the comp plan for that matter? So. Those are maybe the things we should focus some energy on and to what degree we can do some, do some run-through over the next month.
There's, I mean, there's certain things as a, as a planning commission that we can't, we can't comment on, right? The aesthetics of things. I mean, we're not, we have to be really careful about what, when we're giving feedback to somebody, what we're actually commenting on.
If there's, yes, but if there are conditions.
Right, yeah.
For conditional use, for instance, we can.
Right.
You can add that in.
Right.
So there are, there are variables there to consider, but I think that's one of the values of this document.
Yeah.
Is some of that is presented so that a developer can come in and look at this and say, oh, okay, they kind of like this sort of flavor. This is kind of what we're looking for as a city. And so you're giving them those sorts of guidelines, hopefully making it easier.
Yeah, right.
To develop.
Yep. And I think it's, that was, that's my only thought is, is there a benefit to having it separate? I don't know. You know, if it's, if it's separate from the comp plan, we could, I don't know. I'm not sure how, you know, that works legally, but I guess where my head is, we could suggest more. more drastic things than what we could in a comp plan, probably, I guess is what I was thinking, but.
Yeah.
Maybe could it be done as an appendix to the comp plan?
Could be.
That way it could maybe possibly be more easily separated if somebody wanted it just that.
Yeah.
I will email the lawyer and the city manager about your specific question, if there's more restrictive guidelines in the comprehensive plan versus the downtown design manual, because that's a great question.
That'd be a really good way to deal with it. It becomes part of the comp plan. And yet, as an appendix, it can be easily isolated. It's a good, good idea.
Are any of the buildings downtown on the historical register?
I don't.
The post office?
Post office, I think, might be the only one. I don't know if there's any other on the historic register.
Newman's would be the only one that.
I don't think it is. There are some old buildings there that if you go to North St. Paul Historical Society, you can find.
But I would think the post office seems to, especially with the WPA mural.
Yeah, yeah, with the murals.
Yep.
For as long as they're good to keep it.
Yeah.
In perusing the comp plan, there is a fair amount of guidance for, so I don't think it's going to be super constrictive, but definitely we'll still get legal guidance on that.
I should do the walking tour sometime.
Yeah, the walking tour, that, that is kind of a fun thing. My wife was asking me, where was the train depot? I don't know if, it's in, it's at the state fair now.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it is not being used by the state fair. We found this out on Tuesday.
Really?
So if anyone
It was a few years ago.
has interest in it, it sounds like.
Move it again? Let's move it back. Put it by the gateway trail.
Yep.
It used to sit what would be probably where the entire medical building is over there, right over in that vicinity.
I thought it was on this side.
It was pretty close to where the, like, between the snowman and that building. It was right over in that area.
Is that the same one that is pictured in the, in the design manual?
Yes, it's right on that first page, I think, isn't it? Or right near the beginning.
Yeah, it's, there's a, one of those shadow pictures over there.
It's this shadow picture, right, right there on page one.
That's interesting. I didn't realize that that was ours.
Yeah, that's it.
Because I've been looking for pictures of that for several years now and hadn't been able to find one.
But there's no context, so you can't tell where in the world it is. It's also interesting to look at where the streetcar used to run. That's a whole nother piece of history that's really interesting about North St. Paul.
Yeah, it's really weird that we were the only town in the area that had the streetcar down an alley behind the buildings.
Yeah.
Everybody else, everybody else put it on Main Street. North St. Paul.
Yeah, see, and, and that's something that I would absolutely love to see Sepulveda turn into something more attractive. I, I think that would be so interesting. There's so, so much opportunity there for improvement. That's why I really tried to push as hard as we could on the, the new development going on over there, but, at any rate.
Especially with the gateway there. I mean, there's so much potential for the whole of downtown, but.
It'd be nice if we had some sort of like a welcoming sign on the gateway trail that.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yes. A reason for people to come off the gateway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? I don't think we need to take any action with regard to this, but we probably need to do some homework ourselves, which I will try my best to do. That being the case.
The one thing I guess I'd say is if you get a response back from the city attorney before we meet again, could you send it out so that we
Oh, yeah.
have that information as we're looking through it ourselves?
I will do everything under the guidance of open meeting laws to get it to you that I can legally.
Yeah.
I don't, I think he'll have to send it to you.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
And knowing city attorneys, he probably won't be able to get it to us in a month, but, you know, we could ask.
Have some idea, anyway.
Yeah.
All right, that being the case, do we have any reports?
None for me.
Nope.
No reports? The only report I have is what I heard, which is that we will have a new community development director by the end of the month. That's as much as I know. I don't know who it is. He, I was told.
Yes.
That's as much as I know. And for, was formerly at Forest Lake.
At Forest Lake, yeah.
Yeah. But that's all I know.
I don't even know that much.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I heard today, so. That's the only report I have. Anything else?
Nothing here.
Nothing.
Nothing? In that case, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
From Commissioner Rothie and Commissioner Gattboi. And we will adjourn at 7:21.